No, I have some, I have one left here for you. Patty. That's my safe one. There's the other. A plastic one. No, I didn't. Oh. Oh, my gosh, these are my favorite. Can I have two? Here you go. The light. No. Where's Phil? Where's Phil? God, I'm freezing. Are you freezing? I just wanted to look around, see if anybody else was freezing as I was freezing. Yes. Thank you, Dr. Paul, for the cookies. We're just getting them to our guests here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our teeth, thank you. This meeting is a public session of the Council Rock Board of School Directors. This meeting is being recorded by the Council Rock School District and may be recorded by members of the audience. Please stand for the pledge.
My pledge will be to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its establishment, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Paul, please. Mrs. Thomas? Here. Mr. Block?
Here.
Mr. Abramson? He's on his way. He'll be here shortly. Mrs. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Bylick?
Here.
Dr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Gruff?
Present.
Mrs. McCassie?
Here.
Mrs. Sexton?
Present.
School Advisory Board, Mr. Klein or Mr. Funk?
Mr. Funk, welcome.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Do you have anything to talk to us about tonight?
Yeah, one or two things, but mostly the kids.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, the School Board of Directors, Central Administrators, Mr. Klein. I come before you tonight to introduce for the second time this academic year, Council Rock High School South Student Advisory Board. And I would like to extend a special welcome to Jennifer Little, all the way to the left, who will be providing an update on the Sloan School. But we'll start the presentation with our MBIT representative, Victoria. Victoria, take it away.
Hello, I'm Victoria Menastian and I'm a junior Council Rock High School South. I'm also in the Health Science Program at MBIT. MBIT's annual open house is scheduled for Wednesday, January 7th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. A snow day has been scheduled for Wednesday, January 14th. We invite all to come and visit and explore MBIT's 23 career and technical programs as well as learn about our newest programs, sports therapy and exercise management. MBIT has 26 students participate in the 2014 Skills USA District Two Level Conference in November. In addition to knowledge and skills gained during the conference, students had the opportunity to participate in competitions focusing on leadership and school spirit. Middleboks Institute of Technology was delighted to bring home points including third place for Skills USA Cures and second place for Pin Zone. Salon Extreme, the MBIT Student Cosmetology Club, is open to the public and is started climbing on Tuesdays and Fridays. Aspirations, a student run restaurant, is also open to public, starting at 12 o'clock for lunch on Wednesdays and Thursdays. I would like to remind the community that they can learn more about MBIT and all the latest happenings by liking us on Facebook, following us on Twitter and viewing our videos on YouTube. I look forward to reporting you at February's board meeting. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jack Wheatley and I am the junior representative for Council Rock South Student Advisory Board. On Saturday, November 22nd, South's class of 2016 hosted the school's annual winter ball with a country western theme. It was a fun night of dancing, food and life-size cow replicas. Over 1,200 tickets were sold and the dance raised between $6,000 and $7,000 in profit for the class of 2016. They had planned to put some of this profit into creating and sending out care packages for the troops. In other news, from November 11th to November 13th, Golden Wings Theater Company put on four successful and spooky shows of the Addams Family. Families from throughout the community came in support. Auditions take place this week for the winter production of Chitty Chitty Bang Bang. Elementary schoolers from around the district will also be featured in this show. The show dates will be Fridays, March 6th and 13th at 7:00 p.m. and Saturdays, March 7th and 14th at both 2:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. In music news, the winter concert for both South Orchestra and Choir will take place Wednesday, December 17th at 7:00 p.m. South Select Ensemble, South Vocal Ensemble, has also submitted their cover of Angels We Have Heard on High by Pentatonix to B-101's annual Christmas carol contest. So make sure to vote. The song submitted will be heard for the first time tomorrow on the radio. Also, the South Orchestra and South Vocal Ensemble have been invited back to the White House to perform. Each group will perform two one-hour sets full of classic holiday carols and songs they performed for the winter concert. It is sure to be a presidential day for South's music program. Both the orchestra and South Vocal Ensemble are sure to be biding their time until they get the opportunity to perform. And when they do perform, they certainly will be baracking around the Christmas tree. Thank you and have a great rest of your evening.
Who approved this material?
Jack Robinson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Felicia Wilkop and I'm the 10th grade representative for Council Rock High School South. On October 30th, Council Rock South held its annual Blue Ink Bowl Night. There was a great turnout by students of all grades with an overall win by the seniors. The seniors accumulated the most points in multiple events such as tug-of-war, Westchester volleyball and the Dizzy Fat Grease. Following the seniors, the juniors came in second place with the sophomores trailing close behind and the freshmen finishing way. Way, uh-huh. Also, Council Rock High School South has been accepted into the ARIS program. The ARIS program allows classrooms and communities to communicate with astronauts and cosmonauts aboard the International Space Station. The technology that has been set up at our school will give students a chance to communicate with the International Space Station and places all over the world. As of now, we are trying to schedule a contact with the International Space Station in February. I look forward to reporting to you at future board meetings. Thank you for your time and have a good night.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hannah Devlin and I'm the ninth grade representative on SAP. I hope your Thanksgiving break was enjoyable and it's nice to see you all again. Winter sports are just getting underway. Teams have recently concluded trials and games and contests begin this weekend. Good luck to all of our athletes. College Financial Eight Night occurred last night at South in the auditorium. Parents learned tips on how to steer their children to the best school and how to pay for it. South will also host program planning in the auditorium and in the cafeteria at 7:00 p.m. on January 13th. Program planning is a night where parents can get an overview of the courses offered in each subject matter. The attendees will have time to talk to the department chairs and ask questions about subjects. This program planning night will include courses for grades eight, nine, 10 and 11. It's hard to believe, but the second interim reports are already next Friday, December 12th. Grades will be posted online and can be viewed that day on HAC. Thank you for your attention and see you next year.
Good evening. My name is Jen Little and I would like to tell you a little bit about Sloan School. The students of Theodore &amp; Son have been very busy learning through field trips and experiences this fall. Sloan students and H-E program have shared many experiences together, including a trip on September 11th to the Garden of Reflection up in Lakeview, Pennsylvania. This was a very somber day for the students and many life lessons were involved. Once again, Sloan and H-E shared a trip to the Constitution Center on September 17th. This is an ongoing trip experience where the entire day is a lesson not only at the Constitution Center, but also walking through the four set building as a group ordering lunch and eating together. A wonderful day is had by all. The two programs continue to interact by going to the NAC and participating in pillow pull-up, dodgeball, kickball and exercising equipment club. It is delightful to see how the students watch out and help and take care of each other. It is a true learning experience for all participants. One of our Sloan students is researching the military as a career possibility. As part of her graduation project, she planned a trip to the Battleship of New Jersey. She made all the arrangements for times, tickets and buses. During the trip, everyone learned so much about the Navy as our tour guide was a retired sailor. The trip was informative, pleasant and fun as it showed our students' responsibility of planning and seeing the outcome of hard work. This Veterans Day, our students conducted a memorial service at the Robert Dombrowski Memorial Park in Richborough, Pennsylvania. They read a story about two soldiers that were graduates of Council Rock High School South, Robert Dombrowski and Kenon Dombrowski, and how these two brave young men sacrificed their lives serving our country. It was a touching experience to see the students so involved through readings and placing of flowers at each soldier's memorial plaque. After paying our respects in Richborough, we then proceeded to the Veterans Memorial Service held at the Washington Crossing Veterans Memorial Cemetery in Newtown. It was a touching event and the students were proud to be part of the service and were able to thank the veterans in person. In addition, students also helped with the Council Rock Thanksgiving food drive by collecting food from other schools in the district. They loaded, transported and unpacked the donations at the food bank. The Sloan and H-E students are not only involved in community service, but they also learn how important it is to give back to the community by touching others' lives. The students and staff also participate once a month in going to the salehouse. They firstly must plan a meal by reading through the grocery store advertisements to stick within our budget. They must find recipes that are taught to cook a meal which is then enjoyed by everyone. We are also looking forward to taking a trip next week to the Walnut Street Theater to enjoy a performance of a Christmas Carol. Thank you for your time. Have a good one.
Mr. Funk, thank you and ladies and gentlemen, you did a fantastic job except for the funs about the White House. Other than that, there was a positive. Thank you very much.
Sure, Jerry. Jerry?
Yes.
Whoa, 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 what?
This?
Yeah, yeah, this.
I don't know, I thought it was.
I thought maybe we were trying to copy Mr. Block, but he's reformed, apparently.
Is it No Shave December, Jerry?
Huh?
No Shave December?
I did change the memory, but I trimmed it up a little bit, but it still looks a little... My grandma's a magician, but we'll save it.
Thank you again, Mr. Funk, for a great representation for South.
You just got compared to his grandmother. Good for me, good for me. Mr. Klein, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. We've got a couple of presentations tonight that I would like to start with before I read off anything. So let me perhaps ask Mrs. Ray first from Council Rock Education Foundation, Mrs. McGann, and we'll put the first part of our superintendent's report will be the check presentation. Suzanne?
Hi, I'm Suzanne Ray, Executive Director of the Council Rock Education Foundation, and we're very pleased tonight to have the honor of accepting a check from one of our generous community donors. I'd like to introduce Chuck Rattenbusch from Waste Management.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of Waste Management, it's an honor to be here this evening to present this check for $3,000 to the Council Rock Education Foundation in support of their innovative learning grants program. It's quite an honor and a pleasure to do this again in 2014. Thank you very much.
We're going to do a little photo op, but before then, I just wanted to thank them publicly. Thank you, Chuck, for your support. We're very grateful to businesses and individuals throughout the community who support, they give so generously to support the innovative learning grants program that provides so many innovative programs to our students and teachers that are beyond the regular school budget. It's important to note that this donation comes about as part of the Pennsylvania's Education Improvement Tax Credit Program, which it provides tax credits to companies that contribute to educational organizations like the Education Foundation. So with the help of community organizations like Waste Management, the Education Foundation has invested over $110,000 over the last seven years in our students and classrooms throughout Council Rock, challenging the students and teachers to come up with new ideas and present the topics in innovative new ways. So thank you very much, Chuck, for investing in our schools. Want to take a photo? Real quick?
Yeah.
Open chat.
Nice.
All right. Lightning is never great here, but...
All right. Professional.
I want to hear her for the advance. These smiles. One more in case you'd like to hear it.
I neglected to introduce my, our board co-president, Allison McGann, who's accepting the check from Mr. Rattenbusch. Thank you.
Suzanne or Allison, while you've got the microphone, I was going to do it, but do you want to do a pitch for the teacher recognition program?
I have to. One of the programs that we offer at the Council Rock Education Foundation as part of fundraising is an opportunity for parents and students to honor a teacher, especially in the holiday season, with a unique gift instead of a mug or other things like that to make a donation in the name or in honor of a teacher and the great things that they're doing in the schools. And in return for that donation, a card, a student-designed card is sent to the teacher with a personalized message from the donor. So those, that opportunity is available online at our website at www.creeducationfoundation.org. We appreciate anyone who would like to honor a teacher in that way. Thank you.
Thank you. So as a preface to our next presentation, a number of years ago, it was my honor to become superintendent of schools, and one of the first people I met when I entered Chancellor Center and started to get comfortable in my office was a gentleman by the name of Mike Donovan. And the reason I had a chance to see Mike work with Mike is that at the time that I was starting, we were beginning to put together what is a absolutely wonderful display out in our lobby that honors the gentleman who actually went to school here and lost their lives in some combat over the world wars. And Mike was instrumental in putting those together, and I learned an awful lot just by watching him and listening to him talk about each of those plaques and the people and the medals that he researched and all of those things. In that time period, from that point forward, it's been an honor to know Mike. I see him on the streets of Newtown Borough at times, get a chance to talk with him, and I know he has been active in a number of our school settings, most particularly at the Sloan School. So tonight, we have the honor to recognize and to welcome Representative Steve Santasiero and Josie, maybe you'd want to come up too, although you probably didn't know you were going to get called on, but one of the impetus of this was Josie starting to talk to us, and Josie's one of our teachers at Sloan for the work that Mike has done there. So Steve, I'll turn the microphone over to you. I know there's some members of Mike's friends and team that will accept this honor. I wish Mike could have been here tonight, but I understand he's not feeling well and had to skip the ceremony. But we, on behalf of Council Rock, appreciate all the great work that Mike has done for our kids and for our school district. Steve, welcome.
Thank you, Mark. It's a pleasure to be here. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to appear before you this evening, and I want to thank our local veterans who are here tonight as well to honor Mike. He can't be here tonight, but we nonetheless believe it's fitting for us to pause before you get on to the main work before you this evening to recognize what he's done for our community. You know, I can tell you, as a former history teacher, it is usually the big events and the so-called great people that make it into our history books. The Churchills, the Roosevelts, the people who history always notes as the movers and the people who had the biggest hand in what happened in various events. The ordinary people, the people from our communities who nonetheless participated in those events as well and without whom those events would never have occurred, don't make it into the history books usually. And that's a shame because especially when it comes to teaching the next generation about what's happened, there is no better way to do it than to bring an ordinary person who in many cases, when they served, in this case in the military, were a little bit older than they and very much liked them, because that's an opportunity for them to really get a grasp of history and also the sacrifice that people in their very communities have made. When I was a teacher, for example, I brought my dad in once to talk to my history class about his service in World War II. And like so many other combat veterans, he proceeded to tell stories which he had never shared with me or anyone else in our family. And I could see the looks on the faces of the 16 and 17-year-olds in my class as they listened to this now older man talk about his experiences when he was 18, getting shot at by German soldiers. And you could see the looks in their eyes because it was real to them. They could see themselves and their friends potentially in that same situation. And so we're here tonight because what Mike Donovan has done is a very similar thing. He's taken the sacrifice and the experience of people from our community who have served in World War II and other conflicts since then, and he's put names and faces and a history to each of those stories, and he's made them real to the people in our community. He's done that by archiving and making the display that's here in this building. He's done that by creating the display in Council Rock North High School. And through that, he's brought that local history that ultimately usually gets overlooked by the history books to our kids and to the people in our community. And that really is a precious gift and something we should be proud of. And of course, it should not perhaps surprise us that it took a veteran of the Coast Guard and a member himself of what has rightly been called the greatest generation to do this. And so it is an honor for me to be before you here tonight to honor him on behalf of our Commonwealth with a citation and with a flag of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And I would ask members of our local legion, come on up, all you guys want to come on up, and accept this on behalf of Mike.
Don't sit down yet, Josie.
Just a call for the advance. One more, do we have?
Thank you, Steve. Josie, I just think it's important, because you and I have talked about this before, about the kinds of things that he's done with your students, and it lends that kind of sense of connection that Mike has with this community and with our kids. Could you just tell a couple anecdotes about that for us?
Well, the day that we brought the students here, Mike was just so gracious to the Sloan students because sometimes some of them do not have a filter in the questions they ask and how they ask, and Mike just laughed and answered all our questions and he explained to them the step-by-step process. And when we left here, all the students were saying, wow, what an awesome man. And it touches my heart because a lot of teenagers at that age will look at older people and not realize. And what we're planning on doing, hopefully, if Mr. Donovan is feeling okay, take one or two of our students with a few of the veterans to his home, and we bought a flag holder for the flag that presents to him.
Good. Thank you, Josie.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to say that I know Mike for a while. Mike's been a member of the Newtown American Legion 440. He's been a member for 65 years. Mike marched in many parades, and let me tell you, he's helped out the community a number of times. And like they said before about him being history, I have two telephone numbers in my phone book. One, Mike's house number. The other one is the Newtown Historical Association, because when he's not at home, he was always down at the half-moon researching somebody's, you know, doing something for somebody. So I'd just like to say he was always involved in the community one way or another. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here and for being able to be part of the recognition for Mike Donovan. Thanks again, Steve. Just a couple of quick announcements and then we'll move on. Mrs. Thomas, thank you. First of all, just to piggyback on what some of the students said, we are proud of the fact that our high schools will be offering December concerts, and they really are something that are open not only to our parents but to the school community, so we highly encourage your participation. Council Rock North Winter Concert is Tuesday, December 16th, beginning at 7:30 p.m. And Council Rock South, as was mentioned, is on Wednesday, December 17th at 7:00 o'clock p.m. Both of those are open to the public and are in the auditorium of both of the high schools. So please, if you're so inclined and you want an evening of wonderful music, come listen to our young musicians play. I want to take an opportunity because so seldom we do have the opportunity, and one of them just left, but it is important and right to recognize the service of former board members when they're here and they're able to be present for a board meeting. So I want to just recognize and thank Dr. Paul Nagustakis for being here, and Mrs. Heenan was here for a moment and just unfortunately walked out with the veterans, but thank you to both of you for being here and thank you for your service to the board. And we thank you too, Maria, because we know what you had to do to keep it moving forward. And just finally, as a matter of recognizing, a person who I believe was extremely important to Council Rock passed away this week. Don Nasborn was the district justice in our area. Prior to that, was in Northampton. For most of my career in Council Rock, I've had the opportunity to know Judge Nasborn first because his girls, Courtney and Lindsay, went to Churchill when I was there, and then as part of his role of district justice, first in Northampton and then in Newtown. Don was just a fantastic guy, and if he passed you in the street, you were going to hear about Lindsay, you were going to hear about Courtney, you were going to hear about Pat, and then you were going to hear about the things that were going on in his life. And 15 minutes later, you'd have the opportunity to move along, but you were enriched by that experience. Council Rock, on behalf of all of us, because many of us interacted with Judge Nasborn on a regular basis, wish the family well and offer them our deepest condolences. This will be a person in the Council Rock community that will be so used.
Thank you, Mr. Funk. We're going to move on to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address...
Don't sit down yet, Josie. Josie, I just think it's important because you and I have talked about this before about the kinds of things that he's done with your students. And it lends that kind of sense of connection that Mike has with this community and with our kids. Can you just tell a couple anecdotes about that for us?
Well, the day that we brought the students here, Mike was just so gracious to the Sloan students because sometimes some of them do not have a filter in the questions they ask and how they ask. And Mike just laughed and answered all our questions and he explained to them the step-by-step process. And when we left here, all the students were saying, "Wow, what an awesome man." And it touches my heart because a lot of teenagers at that age will look at older people and not realize. And what we're planning on doing, hopefully, if Mr. Donovan is feeling okay, take one or two of our students with a few of the veterans to his home. And we bought a flag holder for the flag that presents to him.
Good, thank you, Josie.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to say that I know Mike for a while. Mike's been a member of the Newtown American Legion 440. He's been a member for sixty-five years. Mike marched in many parades. And let me tell you, he's helped out the community a number of times. And like they said before about him being history, I have two telephone numbers in my phone book. One, Mike's house number. The other one is the Newtown Historical Association. Because when he's not at home, he was always down at the half-moon researching somebody's, you know, doing something for somebody. So I'd just like to say he was always involved in the community one way or another. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here and for being able to be part of the recognition for Mike Donovan. Thanks again, Steve. Just a couple of quick announcements and then we'll move on. Mrs. Thomas, thank you. First of all, just to piggyback on what some of the students said, we are proud of the fact that our high schools will be offering December concerts. And they really are something that are open not only to our parents but to the school community. So we highly encourage your participation. Council Rock North Winter Concert is Tuesday, December sixteenth, beginning at seven-thirty p.m. And Council Rock South, as was mentioned, is on Wednesday, December seventeenth, at seven o'clock p.m. Both of those are open to the public and are in the auditorium of both of the high schools. So please, if you're so inclined and you want an evening of wonderful music, come listen to our young musicians play. I want to take an opportunity because so seldom we do have the opportunity, and one of them just left, but it is important and right to recognize the service of former board members when they're here and they're able to be present for a board meeting. So I want to just recognize and thank Dr. Paul Nagustakis for being here. And Mrs. Heenan was here for a moment and just unfortunately walked out with the veterans. But thank you to both of you for being here and thank you for your service to the board. And we thank you too, Maria. We know what you had to do to keep it moving forward. And just finally, as a matter of recognizing, a person who I believe was extremely important to Council Rock passed away this week. Don Nastorn was the district justice in our area. Prior to that, was in Northampton. For most of my career in Council Rock, I've had the opportunity to know Judge Nastorn first because his girls, Courtney and Lindsay, went to Churchill when I was there. And then, as part of his role of district justice, first in Northampton and then in Newtown. Don was just a fantastic guy. And if he passed you in the street, you were going to hear about Lindsay, you were going to hear about Courtney, you were going to hear about Pat, and then you were going to hear about the things that were going on in his life. And fifteen minutes later, you'd have the opportunity to move along, but you were enriched by that experience. Council Rock, on behalf of all of us, because many of us interacted with Judge Nastorn on a regular basis, wish the family well and offer them our deepest condolences. This will be a person in the Council Rock community that will be so used.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. We're going to move on to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. We would ask that you limit your comments to no longer than three minutes. Please consider the fact that there may be young children in the audience who are watching this broadcast on CRTV. It is our goal to maintain a respectful environment so that members of our community have an equal opportunity, I'm losing my voice, I'm sorry, have an equal opportunity to address the board without interruption. While the board welcomes your ideas and will consider them in deliberating an issue, we may not respond to your comments or questions. I have a sign and sheet. Nancy Carroll.
Mrs. Carroll, before you come to the microphone, Mrs. Heenan, we missed the opportunity to applaud for you as a former board member and back in the audience. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mrs. Carroll.
Nancy Carroll, Newtown Borough. I'm here tonight about the good, the bad, and the ugly. And the good, the very, very good, is Mike Donovan. Three minutes isn't enough to tell you how much Mike Donovan has done for the community and the school district. But I would like to mention three projects that I and others had the good fortune to work on with Mike. One was the Legacy Committee, where we got a Newtown Township grant to make a ten-minute video on Chancellor, which was sent out to potential donors. And Mike Donovan did hours and hours of countless research at the Historic Association to find out things about the building and things that he needed to be put in the script. He would often come by my house with a copy of something else. My kids thought he was my new boyfriend when we were working on this project. And we used to refer to him as mom's boyfriends at the door again with something from the Historical Society. And as you can see, the work he did was a success because there's many plaques around this building that people donated because of the video that they were sent and the work that Mike did. Second was, the World War II broke out. Many students who were in high school here left the high school in order to go on to war. They left without getting their diplomas. And several years ago, the state put in a law that Chancellor and all veterans who did not receive their diploma could get one. And Mike Donovan worked on that committee. And he tracked down those people who deserved a diploma and helped us get their addresses. And he knew somebody who knew somebody who would find out where this guy was so that we could get in touch with him. He was fearless on making sure of that. And third is what Mark just mentioned, is the memorial that's down the hall for those veterans that were fallen during World War II. That was the sole idea of Mike Donovan, and he put it together. And he, his legacy to this community is that his memories and his history will be passed on to many generations because of that. Also, in the good tonight, I'd like to thank Wendy Thomas for her presidency in what has been a very difficult year for Council Rock. She led meetings with grace and decorum and patience, patience that sometimes was just not deserved. Which brings us to the bad. The bad is board members who don't go to subcommittee meetings, who don't do their homework, and don't do what Wendy quite frankly asked them to do over and over again. Which was, two meetings ago, she asked them to get their, what they wanted to vote on to her. And instead, we got the really ugly, which was left to do that at the meeting, where many of us and board members who had done their homework had to sit here for hours and hours while you wordsmith motions. I much would have rathered that you voted on the proposals that the Capitol Committee had, yes or no, and voted them down. That's what we expected. But instead, we had to sit here for hours and hours, so much so that I didn't know if I would come back to another meeting. That was torture for you, for the public, and for those of us who had worked for months. I don't know who your leadership will be going forward, and I don't know who you're going to elect. But I'll tell you one thing, I am not going to sit through another meeting where we are lectured to, wordsmithed, and spend hours and hours doing work that should be done behind the scenes without calling you out on it. Thank you very much.
I'm going to apologize, I can't read the name very well. Bob Roy, Robertford? Somebody from Penns Park? Are they still here? They wanted to speak about Mr. Donovan?
Actually, I believe they were signing in.
Okay, all right, thank you. Janet Marks?
She did that same thing.
Okay, all right. Dr. Paul?
I'm supposed to say my last name?
I haven't said your last name in the seven years I've known you, Dr. Paul. I don't want to start now. I bet your regular names, let alone a longer name.
I actually wrote this down. I'm a little nervous.
Would you like to sit up here?
Hello, everyone. It's an honor to stand before all of you as a citizen of Council Rock and as a parent of two children who have attended the school district and are now in graduate and undergraduate colleges. As a board, I believe you are doing an excellent job. All right, maybe a good job. I know you spent many long nights on dozens of issues before the district. And oftentimes, the public tends to overlook your efforts and accomplishments. I, however, appreciate all that you've done. Yes, I want lower taxes. Yes, I want less spending. Yes, I want better education and better programs. Yes, I want the entire program, from life skills on up, to be the very best. Of course, I want the very best and the most up-to-date and aesthetic facilities possible. And yes, I want to look like Brad Pitt. I know the work you do and how difficult it is. Just work together the best you can and maintain the dignity of Council Rock. I know most of you pretty well. You are all very intelligent, caring, and most of all, you're Council Rock people to the very core. I know you have many people tugging at your arms and legs, but please make your decisions based upon what you believe is truly the best for the students, as well as the teachers' families and the taxpayers. Don't allow others to prevent you in doing what you believe is truly the right thing to do. Selfish, one-sided, and tunnel vision thinking will be the undoing of a great district like ours. Remember, I always felt the Council Rock School Board is a beacon for many of the other districts. You have earned their respect and admiration. I believe to this day that your relationship and ability to work through these difficult issues is the envy of others. I'm sorry that I do not watch every meeting. They're a little bit boring. I know Mr. Klein is leaving soon. I was extremely distressed to hear the news. And I don't get distressed often. As a dentist, you kind of get used to being distressed. After all, nobody really likes to own it a dentist anyway. I do digress, and back to Mr. Klein. I don't know and shouldn't know your intentions as a board. However, I would try to keep him and work, you know, work together through the next couple of years, if possible, to accomplish whatever goals you decide upon with the district. Sometimes changes can be good, sometimes they can be a bad thing and difficult to go through. Perhaps redistricting, facility and land issues are in the cards. I don't know for sure. But I do know that Mr. Klein's experience, his knowledge of the district, and his keen intellect are essential. Whatever decision you make as a board, you need to compromise on these issues and work together. I know I'm blurbating, and I do so only because I truly love this district and I really do love all of you. You will always have my family's support at any time. The holidays are truly a wonderful time of year, especially when you see the school concerts and events. When you see and experience the children of Council Rock as well as the entire community, I sometimes believe heaven is actually here on earth. Please continue the exemplary work you are doing and continue to work with each other. And thanks again for all of your sacrifice and your courage. Happy holidays to all of you and God bless all of you.
Dr. Nagustakis, I expect to see replays of the board meeting in your waiting room.
Anyone else like to speak? Mr. McGill. No, it doesn't really help, I hate to say it. Later it gets the less I can talk.
Okay, you can start it. Steve McGill, Holland, Northampton Township. First of all, I'd like to reinforce what Nancy Carroll said, everything she said with emphasis. Secondly, I'd like to say that as you face reorganization tonight, I'd like all of you, both directors and staff, to realize that none of you are without faults. And, you know, putting that aside, none of you is qualified to lead the board. None of you is unqualified to lead this board. So put those thoughts aside and think about what is best for the district in terms of what your citizen group has given you, all the studies that you've had, and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jenny Schott-Miller from Wrightstown. I just want to say I really appreciate Mr. Klein and the board members who also attended Wrightstown Parent Forum last night. It was, I think, a really good start to the process to finding out what is possible in terms of a solution at Wrightstown. I think the community very much appreciated it, being able to have their voice. It was clear that having a meeting at Wrightstown brought in a lot more people from Wrightstown. And I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I thought it was a really, really good meeting. Thanks.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay, moving on. Any discussion items anybody wants to have this week? Dr. Foster, you look like you would like to speak.
I do. Thank you so much. So actually, as we lead into the next segment, which would be organization, I wanted to know whether any of us had the appetite to talk about what the role of the president was. I know it seems like this would be a good moment. Do you, I think Mr. Bylick had expressed that.
Thanks, McGill. Yeah, for me, and I think coming into the second year as a board member, and also for the public, I'd like some, maybe you could talk about what your thoughts are, what the role of the president and vice president are.
My thoughts? My thoughts of the role is to lead and organize the school board meetings, work to make sure that people's ideas or comments are on the agenda and move forward. Really, to me, it's almost a simple fact. It's not my job to decide anything. It's this board's job to decide everything. In my view, I don't think that that's written down anywhere, just to be clear. That was my interpretation of it. I generally brought anything I thought was at all a question out for the board of five to decide, at least five, it's usually more than five. But the role of the vice president really was to, you know, look over the agenda, work through that, cover when the president wasn't around. I don't think it's a terribly powerful meeting. You make decisions, you're controlling things. I think you're trying to facilitate. I will say my experience this year was a tad bit more challenging than my experience last year because the capital planning process didn't feel like it had a leader. I didn't mean to turn this into this, but you asked me the question. It was rather, rather difficult. I, in retrospect, my personal opinion, I don't know if five or four other people would agree with me, but I think major projects like that should be put under a committee and that committee should lead it because by default, I led it. And I always, I think, said to you guys, "Well, I think maybe the next step in the process should be this. Is this what everybody wants? Does everyone have two meetings? Does everyone have public meetings?" I mean, generally, I didn't just set the times up and say, "This is what we're doing." I don't view that as the role of the president. I view the role of the president as to bring the issues out and let the board at large decide on them and really just keep it kind of organized and flowing. I apologize for the long meeting on those motions. There was hours and hours and hours of work that I personally and many, many people in this board put in behind the scenes to try to get those motions to a place that we wouldn't have done that. But there are nine school board members with nine ideas. And sometimes people come to the table and hear something and change their mind. And that's okay. That's what we all do. Listen, hopefully, and do that. So while I apologize for that long meeting, I will say to this public that every part of that process was transparent. There were no backdoor meetings. There were phone calls to wordsmith things. I tried to make sure everybody had a motion, whether I personally agreed with it or not, that motion was on there unheard. And so, while I feel very badly and I certainly appreciate Mrs. Carroll and Mr. McGill, and frankly, I said from the beginning, I'd be okay voting on one of the proposals. That was my personal opinion. But that was not the will of this board. And so, I think it's the role of the president to work with the administration and get the will of this board moving. In the seven years I've been on it, we've never had board goals. We had board goals this year. I've had many of you who've said, "That was a good thing. We think that's a good thing. We want to keep it going." We got the capital planning done. We may not all think it's perfect, but we got a lot done. So that's just two of the big things. I think the board got a lot done. My role was simply to make sure it comes forward and make sure the will of the board, a will of the majority, moved forward. Wow, I really didn't expect to go on a subject there, but...
That's good, thank you. No, and I just wanted to follow up and say I think you got it exactly right. And it really is, for me, a position of facilitating the work of a group of equals. And it's hard work to do that because if you're doing it ideally right, you end up speaking last and listening most. And it's not easy because you've got to, you have to listen. And it takes energy to do that. And in a way, you know, you've got to, I think you've got a lot of that right about facilitating the role. But it is written down. I mean, the school code says that the role of the president is to preside over the meetings. And then, the school code says that the board may make reasonable regulations for its governance. And then, we did so. We have a policy on how our meetings are run. And they basically say that the president makes sure that everything's sequenced and everyone gets a chance to speak. And so, it is kind of written down. And I wanted to say, whoever gets to be the president tonight, there's a lot of wisdom in our policies and like this membership policy. It's six pages. And there's a school, there's a code of conduct. And there's stuff in there, like as I was sitting at Academic Standards, on page six, item F, it says to recognize that it is important for the board to understand and evaluate, it is as important for the board to understand and evaluate the educational program of the schools as it is the plan for the business of school operation. And then, item H, to welcome and encourage active cooperation by citizens, organizations, and the media in the district with respect to establishing policy on current school operation and propose future developments. I mean, that's just two items of six pages of one of our policies. And then, there's the big blue book over there that Mr. Derek repassed that has extra stuff. So I hope that the future president will read the policies and think about them because prior boards and legislatures have put a lot of thought into them. And I know that Derek would love to talk about them more at length because there's a lot of wisdom in them. So, thanks so much.
Okay. Any other discussion items for tonight? I'm telling you, I'm going to have no voice by the end, so it's a good thing I'm not going to be president anymore. Okay, so I think the next series, you're going to have to help me through this, is elective president pro tem. And we've typically made the solicitor that. Yes?
I remember the name, Solicitor.
The president pro tem. Can I have a second? All those in favor? Say aye. Okay, we don't. Anyone opposed? Okay, Mr. President, how about it?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Now, we would, I'd like to ask the secretary of the meeting to call the role of the reorganized Board of School Directors.
Mr. Abramson?
Here.
Mr. Block?
Here.
Mrs. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Bylick?
Here.
Dr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Grupp?
President.
Mrs. McCassie?
Here.
Mrs. Sexton?
Present.
And Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
That having been done, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for the office of President of the Board.
I'd like to nominate Andy Block.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I would like to nominate Denise Brooks.
Is there a second?
I second.
Are there any other nominations?
I'm close nominations.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have two candidates. I would like to have the secretary take a roll call vote for each of the candidates, starting with the first candidate who was nominated. And that was Mr. Block, I believe. So your vote at this time, roll call, will be yes or no for Mr. Block to... be yes or no for Mr. Block to serve as president.
Okay. Dr. Foster?
No.
Mr. Grupp?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
No.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
No.
Mr. Bylick?
No.
Totals?
That is one, two, three, four, five yeses and four noes.
Okay, then there is no reason to hold a vote with respect to the second nominee, the first nominee having received an affirmative majority of the votes available to be cast at this meeting. At this point in time, I can turn the floor over to your newly elected president, or I can continue to serve for the vice president election. I'm gonna assume I'll just open the floor for nominations for the candidate of vice president.
I'd like to nominate Rick Abramson.
Second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Denise Brooks.
Second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? I'll accept a motion to close.
Motion to close.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There are two candidates for the office of Vice President of the Board. Again, I'll suggest that we have a, or I won't suggest it, I'll direct that we have a roll call vote for the first of those two nominations, which I believe was Mr. Abramson. So, if he would take a roll call vote, a positive vote on this is a vote for Mr. Abramson for Vice President.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
No.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
No.
Mr. Bylick?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
No.
Mr. Grupp?
Yes.
So, it's one, two, three, four, five, six yeses and three noes.
That being the case, there is no reason to hold a vote with respect to the second nominee, the first having received an affirmative majority of the voters present at the meeting. And at this point in time, I would like to turn the meeting over to your new president, Mr. Block.
You. The first thing I want to do is recognize Mrs. Thomas.
Do you want to switch seats? Is that what you're doing? How about it?
Thank you very much.
I do notice he gave me a seat with no microphone.
Where is it?
You can have that, it's not much of a...
Every year, the Council Rock School District recognizes the president and vice president. We used to do it with individual awards, but it became more fiscally responsible to put together this really nice plaque, but then it could also sit in the back and be a recognition of the people over time. So, this year, we put the plaque together and recognized for 2014 with our sincere appreciation, Mrs. Wendy Thomas is president, and Mr. Andy Block is vice president. Thank you for your service.
So, since Dr. Foster and Mr. Bylick asked me questions earlier and allowed me to speak, I don't want to say, but I do want to say something to the other board members on the board. It is, it has been my honor and my privilege to serve. I've been in leadership for a long time. I know that that in and of itself has caused some people stress, but I really appreciate all the support I've had from each of you in this past year, as it was challenging at times. And last year, when I was elected, I wasn't elected by a full board either, and yet, every one of you has helped me out at least one time or another in working to get the work of this board done as we went through this year, and I really sincerely do appreciate that from all of you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I wanted to just say, as vice president, working with Wendy was fantastic. I learned a lot. As others have said, I thought she did a terrific job managing through a tough year. We will continue to work on the plans that we started last year. It will continue to be tough, but I am confident that this board will continue to come together to achieve great things. So, that being said, we need to move on to the appointment of two MBIT representatives, a representative and an alternate. Are there any volunteers?
I'd like to volunteer again.
I mean, I'll volunteer again unless somebody else wants it. I gotta say, anyone who serves at MBIT will find an incredible program, and that Council Rock could benefit from a greater, broader understanding and greater, broader participation at MBIT, and one of the ways to do that is have members serve. So, I love MBIT. I'm happy to do it again, but if anybody has the energy who hasn't done it and feels that calling, I will yield to them. Otherwise, I'll take it.
Anyone else? It looks like...
I'd be happy to do it again. It's a great experience. I feel like it's, you know, the meetings are very fast. They're not as often as obviously we meet. I don't think anyone meets as much as I do. But I still feel very known in the position, so I'd like a second here to be able to grow a bit.
I think that's great, and I know it's a long drive, and I appreciate the fact that you have to make, and I appreciate you both stepping up to do that again. So, thank you. We'll have Dr. Foster and Mr. Bylick. We now move to the appointment of the Pennsylvania School Boards Association Legislative Chairperson and PSBA representative. I'm not sure that we have placed this in the past.
Yeah, that's always been me. So, I'm glad to give up that duty, which is basically answering email and shoveling it to everybody else to anyone who would like it.
So, this is the thing about that. They have that committee now for fair funding, and I am very interested in that and have become involved with that, and it is email, generally just for you guys. It's not a drive anywhere. But Jerry, you might really like that. You might really like to get involved in that fair funding group. I've sent you some stuff.
I've got it.
Do you want to do it and get involved with them as a representative from us?
You know, I, it doesn't meet on a schedule. It doesn't go in a place that I want to be, that I can be. So, that's no...
All right. Do you not want to? No, I'd be happy to, but he might want to.
I appreciate that, no.
So, I'll do what I can with that.
Fantastic. Thank you. It's yours, Mrs. Sexton. And then, the appointment of the PSBA employee relations contact.
You know, we have this appointment, and I don't know what it does, and we've had it for years, and I would suggest, if you could, I don't know that anywhere is required that we have to have a single, so I would suggest, if you would, that we don't take it as a single appointment, and that instead of giving anyone email address, we give out the board members at CRSD. Let everyone get the mail.
And we can be days off for those things, too. We're members of PSBA along with you, so...
So, anything that we're registering, that would be the better way that everybody gets the mail. That keeps everything transparent. Everybody gets everything.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. Do that, Mr. Klein. Now, we move on to the...
Does PSBA require or suggest? No. Again, I see to what has been sort of tradition for the past 11 years. They've always been part of this, but we can absolutely fill in for that piece of board members would rather and just distribute it all to them.
So, now we move on to the approval of the school board charters.
I move to approve the charters as included in our package this evening.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Abramson had asked for a charter for a policy committee. We used to have one. I didn't put it in here, but I would certainly recommend that we reform that committee. I think it's time to start to take a look at that and to look at some new ideas rather than trying to piecemeal it together. So, if the board would consider that, we can put something together like that, too.
I'd also like to suggest, I'm, well, I'm still discussing on that, so that, do you want to make a motion to that? Well, we have a motion on table, so we have to approve the first. I need to make a motion, or do you just want to put together a charter? How do we want to do that?
Well, I can make a motion that...
But we already have a one, so we have to wait until the first one clears.
Or we could add to it, add to the existing motion, a charter similar to the existing charters for a policy committee with the go-to person, now which raised the motion, would be Mr. Klein.
We don't normally claim a committee. Normally, a committee chair is a member of the board, not a...
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying the...
Okay, I'll amend my motion to include the creation of the administration to create a charter for that to come back to the board for future approval, and approval of the current charters in this session.
Seconded your motion.
To the question, it came up most recently. We had one for a while as well, talking about board committees. Couple things. There's always discussion about leadership, and there are only three committees that people seem to want to lead over time or eager about. There's academic standards, there's facilities, and there's finance. And so, I would suggest also, looking at the recent conversations from last week, and also a surprisingly large portion of our budget, also goes to technology, and it's something that we, as a district or as a board, should have a little better understanding. I don't know that it needs to be a standing meeting. I don't know that it needs to meet on the frequency of the, as the other committees. But, you know, we talked about technology, and last time we were here, we spoke at length about moving an IT center with 113 terabytes of data. Anybody know what that 113 terabytes has? Anybody know how many servers we have? So, it's one of those things, we spent a lot of money on this. We had an estimate last time for outsourcing, which would be about $900,000. That's come down, but it's, this is something which, how, my question is, should this be a committee? Should we have a committee on technology to meet with? Or, you know, because this is, when we look at, the people speak about the recommendations coming out of the Capital Planning Committee, there were recommendations around technology. You know, and we jump on the finance part of it, and we jump on the facility part of it, and the technology part, we kind of wave and say status quo. So, I would like to, I would, unless I get, I'm open for discussion about it, because my intent would be to amend my motion further to include the construct, or coming back to the board, of an additional charter for a technology committee, which, while we would be approving the other charters tonight, the charge here would be to come back to the board with a proposal for a charter to be discussed by the board. Yays, nays? Ups, downs, thoughts?
I think it's a good idea, and this is, I'll A, say I think it's a good idea and it should be done without delay, and B, also say, and yet, we have a ton of work to do with capital planning and all that, so it's, I think it's work that should occur regardless. It's just, there's this frustration that we have an awful lot to do as well, but that's the way it goes.
I think it's a, I think it's a great idea. I don't know that it has to be a monthly thing.
No, I don't think so, I...
And we can figure out how the charter would work. For the record, the February agenda item for academic standards is technology, so maybe we could even somehow incorporate that into...
There are many aspects of technology which, you know, and the other reason I mention it is because, and I know I've spoken with a few people about this, when we get agenda items that come up on the board table, we always look to the administration to speak to them, and it is my hope that as we deal with agenda items going forward, that every agenda item will have a board champion, that someone from the board will be able to speak knowledgeably and be providing the input. As much as I love Doug and Christine and Bob to present things, this is a board, and the board should be, if something's coming to the board, there should be a champion of every item on the board, and that champion should be willing to speak to it and be knowledgeable about it, because otherwise, we're just order takers, and I don't think that's what we are, but I want that not to...
Well, I don't think we rubber stamp...
No, we don't. I didn't say rubber stamp.
The knowledge. We hired knowledgeable people to provide us with professional information. If we doubt their ability to do that, then there's a, there's a big question there. But for me, there's nothing wrong with knowing what we're voting on and being able to talk about it. I doubt that I'd be able to champion just, you know, I don't know. It's the rubber chicken thing. They want the rubber chickens. We agree to buy them every year, and I'm not against having a committee for technology, Jerry, but when would they, when would they meet? And that's, that's the thing. We've given every single Thursday night. So, I say you don't make a committee. That's what I think went wrong with, with policy. The policy, you met, and you met, and you met, and then you didn't meet, and you didn't meet for a long time, and then you were on the telephone, and in order to have the meeting, you required the help of an administrator, or then you didn't want the help, and then you bought them from PSBA. It just fell apart. And so, I don't, I say maybe you don't make a whole charter or a whole committee unless you're really gonna set up a meeting schedule that you're actually gonna come to. Should special consideration be given to technology? Absolutely. Absolutely. Does it need to have a charter? I don't know. And I want to know what you're gonna, you know, when are you gonna do, is it gonna be Tuesday and Thursday night now?
I want to be careful, because you keep saying you.
Well, anybody.
Right, and I don't want it to be the impression of anybody that this, that any of the board members or me in particular decided to have committees, decided not to have committees, imposed it on the administration, took it away from the administration. That wasn't, that wasn't...
No, I don't mean to say that. You had a, usually administrators met with us when we had these meetings. I attended some of the policy meetings. I couldn't, I couldn't stand it, so I had to leave. I mean, I loved listening to the two of you, Wordsmith and Wordsmith, and go over and argue, but it's not my thing, and we always had an administrator with us at that time in those meetings. So, I don't, do you want to go back to that way, or do you want to make another way?
Well, that, from the policy perspective, and it's Rick's idea, but from my perspective on policy, which was, our policies have aged. We look at the ones that are current or the PSBA has an issue with, and we don't go back and look at others. There are policies, most policies, when you have a policy manual, has a defined renewal schedule, that every policy has to be reviewed within some schedule, time, two years, three years, to make sure it's current and up to date. And we're always trying to be reactive rather than proactive. So, that was Rick's argument of policy. Well, that wasn't his argument, but his guide. My thing was, while I would like to have a champion, my issue was technology. So, I hear you, that you say, when would it meet? And from my perspective, it can be, it can meet on a less defined schedule because the issues come up, but I think it's important that Matt, or, you know, anyone, you know, his department have an opportunity. When we sit here and there's a presentation of, we're gonna spend $750,000 on upgraded Cisco switches, which will now be supported over power over Ethernet POE, and they're gonna be 5.4 gig instead of 2.4 gig because the bandwidth, everybody know what I'm saying? That's the discussions, and how do they work? How does that work? And much as we have members of the public who like to attend the academic standards, there are members in the public who are knowledgeable about this stuff that provides. Matt has had an informal group of people who meet with him, you know, not, I'm not part of that, but who are technology experts. They come together. The board should be aware, so they can...
I think they also collaborate with people at the AMU, too, and those people meet pretty regularly. So, I mean, I see the value of it. I just don't want to sign up for saying we're gonna have extra committees that we don't know when, where they're gonna meet.
Well, be quarterly.
With that in mind, I'm gonna amend my motion to include that the administration will be charged to develop, in addition to approving these three, that the board also agreed to direct the administration, in addition to creating a charter for the technology commit, policy agreement to direct one for the technology committee, those two newly created ones to come back to the board at a meeting in January.
I agree. Second.
Is there any more discussion, motion on the floor? Any objections?
Hearing no objections, all will be pleased.
I got it, Jerry. Thanks, buddy. Secretary, hearing no objections, would you please note that the motion has been passed with unanimous consent? With that, we'll move to the appointment of the subcommittee members. Let's start with academic standards. Any volunteers? Academic standards?
I volunteer.
Fantastic. We have got a great start with the academic scorecard. Can't wait to see what that looks like. Last year, the academic standards meetings have been great this year, and look forward to more of that, so thank you, Ms. Brooks. Let's move to facilities. Any volunteers?
I'm happy to continue.
Well, you certainly started capital planning, so I look forward to having you finish it. Well, you certainly started capital planning, so I look forward to having you finish it, I guess, Ms. Kessie. And how about for finance?
I'd like to do finance. I haven't done that in many years.
I know, we've gotten over it again, but I love it.
You've done it for three years in a row, Bill.
I know, I love it, though.
Well, let me, let me toss this one out there as well. I mean, we're talking about an IT committee, we're talking about a, a policy committee. Both of you, in my personal opinion, are incredibly detail-oriented and interested in both those areas.
Bill spoke, so, so.
Dr. Foster talked about it this evening. I wonder if one of you might be interested in policy, heading up the policy or the IT committee?
You'd be great with the IT.
Billy, you spoke, I hear you say it. You spoke, you started off this morning, this evening's meeting, talking about how important policy was, and that we should read them.
Let's, let's not have, are there any, is there anybody else who's interested in one of these that are out there?
I would share policy, but, I mean, I, I don't want to give up academic standards to do it.
I would share policy, but I don't want to give up academic standards to do that, so.
Thank you. What I'd, I'd, I'd like to do is appoint Dr. Foster to the policy committee and Mr. Grup to the finance committee. Is there anybody who might be interested in a potential IT? Lead the IT committee.
Well, because we don't know if it'll pass, that'd be the problem.
Okay.
Can I make a comment about finance? Because I don't want to sit here silently. I, I would have, glad you finished that, and I didn't want to interrupt the, the process, but I would have also been interested in finance, but I'm concerned about the pressures of time this year, and I, I wanted to make sure that I, I would want to make sure I could commit everything, so I didn't want to sit here silently after being interested last year. That's the reason I didn't say anything.
No, and I appreciate that. Dr. Foster over the last few years has done a terrific job, and my hope would be that although Jerry will be leading the committee, that we can all work collaboratively together to make sure that we identify some of the, the real challenges and, and do the work of the board together. So I think there's an opportunity, Mr. Byler, to continue to, to have, you know, significant input, as you see things, and Dr. Foster as, as well. So that's the end of the appointments, so we'll move to, I guess, our motion agenda. Ms. Thomas, if you could read that motion, please.
Can we get to the committee schedule?
Oh.
I have number 10.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Is there?
Yeah.
I would just, I mean, I'd like to talk about it relative to academic standards. Board attendance typically is pretty low. Recognizing that there's not other nights, and that we like the idea of Thursday nights, I don't know if there's a way to perhaps, you know, if they're, in, in any given month, if we, if we could see ahead and see that maybe the facilities or finance agenda might be lighter, that we could move that, so that we can move academic standards to pair with something else, just to promote a little bit more board attendance. Because it's really not possible to start academic standards later than six o'clock, because we have an end time, and when we, you know, our end time's really like 7:15, 7:20. So, we really, because we don't always start on time, and we really do have to start at six. But I would like to talk about if there's a way to bring more attendance to academic standards.
And I, and I agree completely with you. I don't know if there's an opportunity on, because, you know, academics is, is what we're here to do. Is there an opportunity to bring in some of those topics into a general board meeting? I don't know what other people think of that, to where we could see some of the bigger ones.
We did, we do that.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that, but.
But, you know, one of the things is that the dynamic of a committee meeting is far different than a meeting here.
Yeah.
It does not promote, you know, the community feedback in the same way. And it's, a committee session is more of a work session. It's a, it's a just freer exchange of conversation, sitting around a table with the administrators. It's a totally different thing, so I don't think, I mean, there are times, I mean, that we have done that, but I don't think that that's the ongoing solution.
I'd like to throw a different spin on that, and I would actually, and I understand the free flow of information at the committee meetings, and it's more casual. But I find that there are far too many things decided on at committees, and it, and if you, although we may not vote on it, we've had so many conversations where, well, we talked about that at committee. So if you're unable to make it, and let's be honest, none of us, few of us can make every single meeting. I would like to have, see if there's any interest in any of the board members of having our committee meetings right here, so we can go back and play them again on YouTube. That's, that's so helpful, and it's one of the best things.
I, I don't disagree, but I, I'm just gonna say that, you know, the last meeting that we moved into this room did not have good attendance. And, you know, we had it in here, and it was filmed, and most of the board table was empty. The issue is, whether it's in this room or elsewhere, if we're going to conduct it before a board meeting, it's, it's not going to get great attendance. And if we conduct it and give it the time that it merits during a board meeting, we have to understand that our board meeting that would start at 7:30 is going to be an hour longer.
I, I understand that.
I don't care, I'm just saying that that's.
The difference is, that is valuable information, and it's, it's information that I often miss, because it's 6:00 PM, and it's so hard to get here at 6:00 PM, and that's, that's why.
I agree, and that's why I brought it up, because I'm the chair of the committee, and I'd like to see everybody there, too. So I agree, I don't know about the solution, but.
So I would at least, I would at least like the opportunity to hear the information, but we don't have that, because there's no replay. There's, there's really no way to, to get that information.
And that's true for, of the, the other committees, though.
That is true for the other committees, yes.
Mr. Grup, do you have a comment?
One of the things which I, I'd like to see, and as, as new president, I hope this is something that you will be able to do, is I would like to see the agenda items that are, the items that are coming as agenda items thrown out on the, on the agenda, on, on tentative agendas, nine months in advance. We know where many of these items come. We know when the school, the, the approval for this, the, the prom is. We know any approval for travel is. We know any approval for the bus. I'd like to see those agendas. My point in saying that is, sometimes, this board does not do what some other community boards do, which is you find the community board sometimes to say, there's no meeting in Bristol today, there weren't enough agenda items. We don't do that. We meet. But sometimes we have a very short agenda, and so hearing both parties talking about it, some of the things, this evening when, when Mr. Desco and Joy presented, and Joy, because I was script last name, and Barry and Joy, I will do it that way, presented the, the items in academic standards, that was a presentation. That could have been done here, so if we knew the schedule going out, we saw a light schedule, we could say purposefully, we want the presentation on this in March, or we want, and, and to have a little per, view onto that. Some items, you know, which is, some of the items in academic standards are discussion. Some items in academic standards are presentation. It's a mix. Those presentation items could certainly come here, and then you get the better.
The academic standards agendas are set for an entire year, so you can check and see what those items are. So if any of you see a future topic that you think should be moved into this room, like we did for class size.
Right.
Just let me know.
I completely agree with what Denise is saying. I, I, I know, even when I, when, I don't remember how long ago I was in academic standards, we would put some things in the board meeting. But I think your goal, if I heard it correctly, was actually to get more attendance, to make it easier. I'm generally at them. I was, I was not able to make it tonight. Personally, if you're asking for feedback, I'm happy to come on another day and make sure we have whatever time it takes for a discussion item. That, that's not a problem for me. I'll be put away Thursday nights, but it's once a month, and likely your topic might not be every month. Maybe four times out of the year, you would want us to come on a Monday night. And we did, you did a common core, and you had speakers here, and that was a different night of the week, I think.
Monday.
So, for me, it, it is a little easier to do a seven or a 7:30 than always getting a rate at six. But I have, I would say I make most of them, so you, you probably won't make your decision on me, but I, I do.
I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, we could just leave it the way it is.
The, the, the thing, Denise, that I would say to you is that when we had, and I remember in the past, sitting with Joy right in the center there, there were six people that showed up, including Mrs. McPlandon and myself, for the academic standards meeting, because we had it on a different night. We moved them to the board meeting nights,
thinking that people are coming for the board meeting, and that's, that, they'll come just a little earlier.
If, if our board meetings didn't tend to run till 11 o'clock, you could start or go a little later.
Yes, start the board meeting at eight.
Start the board meeting at eight.
Six thirty.
But, but then you can have, for, I don't know, maybe all of you are great at making decisions at midnight, but for me, I would rather not have employees here till midnight, and I would rather not be here myself anymore at that hour. It's ridiculous. So, that would, I mean, if, if we could see that that was what was happening.
But, are you looking to piggyback, so that there is additional, or a different night? Because I don't, I think what you said was, if you marry it to something else.
Well, if we, if, if it became, you know, in the months, for example, next week, finance and facilities are, are combined. That starts at 6:30. That half hour may make a difference. So if, instead of financing facilities, it was academic standards and facilities, that might help. My, my goal is simply, I mean, a lot of times after an academic standards meeting, people on the board may ask me questions, and I, you know, forward information, everything's available. But it's not the same. Doing your homework by hearing, you know, reading the presentation on your computer is not the same as participating in the conversations. And, and Jerry, you came a little late tonight, but, you know, you viewed it as a presentation. To me, tonight's meeting, more than any, was very much a discussion, because the numbers on the screen, without the benefit of the dialogue that came from Barry and the interaction with everybody else, it, it was, you would get two completely different impressions, in my opinion. So, I, I'm just looking to, to respect the people who say, I feel bad that I can't come to this meeting, but I can't get here at this time. How do we not shortchange academic standards month after month, to, just to change it up? So I don't know, you know, I don't know what the answer is, but I think that maybe we could.
It's also a different field with regard to the community as well, because we will stand and we will talk with people at the end of facilities and finance meetings that you don't have the opportunity to do, because two-thirds of the board is racing to get over here.
Why don't you, what, what if we just moved facilities or finance to the academic standards tonight, and plug in academic.
The problem is, I feel like we'd have to look at the agendas to do that, and I think that's where you started, because there are some meetings, for example, when we're talking about summer projects, and then we speak about that facilities, and then Bob immediately speaks to the financing after that. So, there's not, it's not always that intertwined, but there are some times where I think it would be. Well, in months without holidays, we're doing them on different nights, too, though. The only reason we're doing them, two on one night in November and December, is because we have holidays in there, and we only have three Thursdays. So if we could just get more Thursdays in the year, we'd be fine.
It would be great.
See, that's, the, the, what I look at in the finance and facilities meeting is, the items that come in finance and facilities always come for a vote. Almost all those items are prefaced to a vote by the board, so they're informational, so the board makes different decisions. Some of the things presented in academic standards, some, not all, are not, they're, I, I, my history of them is, they're more informational. Some are, some are definitely coming to the board, but some are informational. That's the, that's the struggle I have with that.
Well, I think, I think, I don't know when I guess Denise was just waiting, but I think the stuff that comes to academic standards is, do we want to investigate it as a board and move further? We're looking at the math program. Do we like it as it is? Do we want to do more investigation of it? It's not so much that it has to come for a vote, because it's got to get bought next month, like in facilities or whatever. It's more, but it, I agree, it's more what we do every day with the students. I'd like to see it up at more times.
Then you're back to the challenge that Mr. Byler spoke to, which is, some things get decided. So you look at the math program, and you say, pick yes, pick no, it doesn't matter. The rest of the board doesn't hear about it. That was, that was his point.
Might, might it make sense, I think, to your point, that maybe Mr. Klein and I could work on a six-month agenda and see what those look like, and see if we can work with each of the committee heads to see how we could slot them in? Because it sounds like time's the issue in terms of people getting to the meetings, because I agree, I, I think we have to make it accessible for people, so maybe by having line of sight to our agendas and, and the other facilities, or the, the other committee meetings, we can, we can try and prioritize that.
They used to be held at five o'clock, I think.
I mean, rather than just locking in, in, into a schedule.
Yeah.
I mean, it, academic standards is easy, because you can go online right now and see the entire year and understand, well, that's going to take a little bit more time, or, you know, that might be a higher, higher priority for, you know, more people. If you can marry that and say, oh, you know what, look, in April, you know, such and such is happening in academic standards, and that really should have more attendance, but in April, you know, facilities might be a little calmer, let's put facilities the first, you know, the one before the board meeting, and then move academic standards into that slot. It's up to you, but I mean, if, if we can look at it longer term and, and publish it out earlier, I think.
I think that makes less sense, so maybe Mr. Klein and I can take a shot at that, get feedback from the individual committee chairs, since you are so well-planned out, and see if we can come back to the board with recommendations. Yep. Great. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to our motion agenda. Ms. Thomas, read the motion, please.
Oh, yes. I move to approve the law firm of Eastburn and Gray P C as solicitor for the Council Rock School District for the 2014, 2015 school year. Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I, so I'm gonna be voting no on this, and it has no reflection on Eastburn and Gray at all. I think the, the attorneys who represent us do very good work. I think that they're, they're very fill in their billing, fair in their billing. My concern is, the first time I voted on this, I, it was right after I was sworn in. And now, a year later, there's still been no discussion about looking at other firms, evaluating this firm who's been with the board, I don't know how many years now. A long time, and, but again, no reflection. I'm certain that we come to the same conclusion, that Eastburn and Gray is, is the right representative here. But we're spending public money, and we should make sure that we're getting the, the fairest deal and the best representation we have. And I, I believe that we should do that with all of our vendors, at least every few years, so that's, that's the reason I'll be voting no tonight.
So I think, that's it a few weeks ago, that thank Eastburn and Gray, who we approached last year, which I think you're saying is fair in the billing, for this reason, I did let the board know. Did want to publicly thank them as we discuss some financial issues, and with the frequency of board meetings we're gonna have, and the length of the board meetings we're gonna have, they significantly reduced their fee to us for all public meetings and executive sessions. And I know that's not your, that's why you said fair billing, so I just, I just want to say, we, we, they did that, and I wanted to publicly thank them, but we were late and I forgot, so I do want to say that now. Thank you, Mr. Reed.
I, I do think that we have, Mr. Byler, looked and questioned and challenged Eastburn and Gray to give us the best prices, and when you've seen some of the other attorneys we've hired for other business, you can see that we've done, they've done for us, an excellent job at a price. I, I have watched, Mr. Reed. I had to think about it the other day. I believe I began attending Council Rock School Board meetings when my 32-year-old child was four. And so, that's 28 years. I thought he was pretty old then, and, and I'm surprised to know he's still here, working hard.
I was appointed in, in 1980.
Pardon me?
1980 is when I started, August of 1980.
Yeah, so it's a long time. John wasn't born until 81, and, and there you are. And he's been here ever since, and I'm happy to have him. So, I, he carries, they carry, that firm carries the history of Council Rock. They know every dogfight we've been in. And they've brought us through lots of them, and we've come out on top of those of them. And so, for me, I'm satisfied, and I'll be voting yes.
Well, I just want to be clear, if I could respond, I'm sorry. Again, no reflection on Eastburn and Gray.
I know.
It's about process, and to me, sitting here, Patty, I haven't been on the board as long as you, sitting here another year, appointing a solicitor when we have nothing to compare it to, feels to me irresponsible. Has no reflection.
We've done comparisons recently enough that I feel comfortable.
When, Mr. Grup? Back when Derek Ray here had, was a young man, Dorian Gray. No, that, we, we have, we have. We've actually gone out, when we put out some of our other contracts and, and approaches for people in other specialty consultings, we've included the option of, what would it be to be a solicitor for the district? And they've included, or, or some people have really provided that at, because they want, they want the job, or they wanted to attract us to there. And my, my commentary on this is, yeah, I, I have, make no bones about it, I have run hot and cold, depending on whether I agree with the position the solicitor has put us to, or given us or not, and that's, and that is to be expected. But one of the things that, you know, I think we need to consider, and just be aware of, that the contracts for professional services are not bid in the same manner as the contracts for commodities and, and hard goods. When you, when you bid for a truck, the truck is the truck, and you have to find. When you, when you bid for a truck, the truck is the truck, and you have to find the specs upfront. Paul was here, look at him and say, you know, when you're picking your dentist, if you're picking by price, you're probably picking the wrong way. And I think that is something to be said for that as well, in, in the legal profession. I think Eastburn and Gray, through Derek and through Rob, heard the complaints, heard our observations. It was actually, you know, I had made these observations strongly two years ago by phone when I was down with the Marines in Paris Island for this meeting. And they've responded, and they, and they've made the corrections when, when Wendy met with them at the direction of the board. So I, I'll be agreeing with Patty on this one, and, and I'll, I'll be saying yeah.
Any other comment? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Bylick?
No.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grubbs?
Yes.
Mrs. McKesson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. We'll move on to board topics. We don't have any listed. Is there any more board topics or board discussion this evening? Now, we'll move on to the committee reports, academic standards.
Academic standards met tonight. We had a review of Keystone and PSSA results and an overview of the school performance profile. Lots of great information. All will be posted on the website soon. Our next meeting is Thursday, January 8th. Confusing, second Thursday of the month, but the first is a holiday. And our topic is prevention programs.
Thank you. Facilities?
Just about everything that we touched upon at the facilities meeting last month voted on at the following meeting. And our next meeting will be Thursday, December 11th, and that is, as you mentioned, combined with finance.
Excellent. And Dr. Foster, I know if there was anything from the last finance meeting you presided over.
You know, that was probably some time ago. I can't remember whether we talked about it before. Was that the one where we went over transportation and, and the preliminary budget? I think we already.
We talked about the budget schedule, and, and it always comes to the question, which will come back to the board, which is, will the board be agreeing early on to, to act within the Act One limits? Because I think the timeframe is January is. Yeah, that by January 29th, this board will have either had to express its will to act within the Act One limits, or to begin filing the papers that will allow us to, to run further, for exceptions. So, at this point, that's something we'll talk about, I guess, in early January. Here, too, it's something we should just make sure everybody gets to the same position. And that's one of those topics, it says, if all the board isn't there, that's a topic we have to have here to give him direction early in January.
Can I backtrack for one minute? I'm sorry.
Sure.
Doug and I had spoken earlier, and I'd forgotten. There is, because of the work that we've done in the past several weeks, very little for a facilities agenda for the next meeting. Does anybody have any problem if we skip that meeting and move the items to the following?
I think we would also offer that the finance agenda is, is light too, so.
A Thursday night off?
Academic standards, because move.
I wish I knew that before tonight.
I think it's a, it is a good holiday gesture to give you a Thursday night, and I don't particularly think we have a strong agenda for either one of those committees that couldn't be done in January. So if you want to go ahead and cancel those meetings on Thursday, that would be okay with us, too. Right?
I can't say we won't all accidentally show up.
MBIT?
There's no, there's no meeting, we not been our last meeting. Again, I think we, I feel like we've discussed it already.
Yeah.
And Patty, anything from the IU?
I gave you everything for the IU at our last meeting, and there is no December meeting in the IU.
Okay, so with that, we'll move to public comment. Is there any public comment?
I think we got a tag team going.
It's incredible how you can, Steve McGill, Hall and Northampton Township. It's incredible how a reorganization meeting can take this long, but I'm not surprised. As far as an IT committee goes, I would suggest that one of the things you might consider is a permanent agenda item, say, every other meeting or something, for each of the three standing committees, so that you can, you know, focus on a particular IT priority that would facilitate academic standards, or finance, or facility. That way, maybe, you know, you could get some things going with IT beyond, you know, whether or not people can hear you from the microphones. I would also suggest that your committee meetings be videotaped and put on YouTube, and also that all of your videotapes be edited so that you can find agenda items amongst all the clutter of discussion that, you know, leads to such confusion on the part of the public. You can spend hours going through those, and you, eventually you find a nugget of something that, that may, you know, was pertinent to the discussion. So, you know, I know that would cost the board some money, but the productivity for the public in reducing confusion and raising their awareness, including what's going on in committees, would be invaluable. So, with that, good luck.
Hi, Joanne Hinton, Richborough. Three quick things. First of all, just as a community member who has gone to some of the academic standards meetings especially, and I used to go more to finance and facilities, I, I really like how they are run when they're not on camera in a big, somewhat more sterile environment where the community is a step away from what's happening. And I realize it's always up to you guys, but it does give community members a little bit of an opportunity to be part of the process. So, there's never going to be a perfect night and a perfect time for anybody, so you guys have to work that out. But I hope that these meetings stay user-friendly for the community. Secondly, I don't know what you're going to do about technology, but it's certainly something that is not going away. And I would think that however you might choose to do so, to have some kind of formal process for dealing with technology, not only for the district and the facilities, but also for inside the classroom, I think is really critical. And thirdly, I want to thank the outgoing officers, welcome the incoming officers. Thank you all for a very good year, and hope you all have a very happy and healthy holiday.
Nancy Carroll, Newtown Borough. I see the biggest problem in this district is technology. The problem is, we're not spending money on technology. The technology budget is so small. We are lucky that we live in a community where parents and PTOs donate devices, and now they're even paying for access points, or we wouldn't even have them. Our high schools are not going to get enough access points till the summer, as part of a summer project. The middle schools aren't going to get it until the end of the renovations. The only elementary schools that have it are the three that have been renovated. Goodnell, Holland, and Churchville. And now Sulfine Stone stepped up to buy devices and access points. We're going to start to be the ones that have and the ones that have not. Technology is sorely lacking in this community and sorely needs your attention. The problem is, it crosses all fields. It crosses academics, it crosses facilities, it crosses finances. So maybe you can figure out, how can we spend more money on it in finances? Or, you know exactly what we need in facilities, and talk about the educational. We have wonderful things going on in technology, all across this district, by innovative teachers who are up on what they're doing, and that needs to be spread district-wide. As far as academic standards go, there are often times I sit in there and think, boy, this would be really great to put on TV. We're doing wonderful things here. When we brought the specialized kids in with the iPads. Tonight, the scores, whatever they are, I'm sure the community is interested in. And I think that you need to bring more of that to the meeting in public after it goes to academic standards. That's what it used to be like. And I think that you need to pick and choose some of those and have them at your meetings, because I think the community would be interested in. And it was always my impression that the biggest thing the board is responsible for is policy. And yet, you had to, like, turn people's arm to step up to, to do policy. So for those that did, I thank you. And for those of you who didn't volunteer for anything, it's a shame that you can't help your fellow board members. Thank you.
Jenny Shop Miller, Firm Rights Town, on that. Mr. McGill's idea about indexing videos might be the single best idea I've ever heard at any of these meetings. Because when you went to the meeting and you want to go back and look, you can usually find it. But when you miss the meeting, oh my gosh. It's hard to find something if you're really interested in one or two agenda items. That was a really great idea. I wanted to just highlight or reiterate something Ms. Thomas said about when there's something like capital planning, that it, it should come through a committee. When I was looking at what other school districts do, for example, just as an example with redistricting, which is a similar type of in-depth process, they, they do usually come. There is a committee that's, like, an ad hoc committee assigned to that specific activity. The other thing that I, I liked what Ms. Thomas said, which I've seen, what I would call a best practice of school boards, is that when they go through a process like that afterward, they evaluate how it went. And Ms. Thomas said, you know, I really think, looking back, this. If everyone took 10 minutes and thought about capital planning and wrote down for yourself, what, what did you like about it and what you would do different next time? And it's, put that on your agenda in January and just have a little conversation about it. That would sort of document lessons learned that you could use next time. That would be awesome. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kevin Campbell, Upper Makefield. I had the pleasure of watching last meeting on TV, and got to be honest with you. I've heard numbers before, and no disrespect to what the numbers are out there. But when we looked at moving the NOC into another facility, and I heard the numbers come back for what it's going to cost, I almost fell out of my chair. We're trying to condense things down, but not at a price tag that, I look back at what Sulfine Stone cost us, it's almost identical to that from the numbers I was looking at for what we're supposedly going to the future with technology, and things are supposed to be smaller. I had the pleasure of running into Andy just before Thanksgiving holiday, and congratulations, Andy, on your new appointment. And thank you for all the hard work for the outgoing president, Wendy. I think the capital planning plan, the transparency was a great idea, everything that we did. But the hard work is really yet to come. I mean, we spent a lot of time, and quite frankly, I told Andy we probably could have voted two or three months earlier on a lot of those topics. But the biggest, biggest part of that part was the community. They needed to be heard. And they're going to need to be heard as we go down the road. We have a lot of things ahead of us. There's a lot of people in the audience that have expertise in the fields. I would challenge our services providers, our architects, our engineers, to go back and look at these numbers, go back and look at the space planning, and say, you know what? The, whatever million-dollar fee, it, it can't be that. Just because we have a budget to pay for it, doesn't mean we should pay for it. We need to make sure it's for the right reasons. I do this, I do a lot of things for a living, and that's just looking at it in budgets. The first price tag, never the best. We look at things and we keep pushing them down. It, it may not be the best thing, but we have to look, and we have to challenge them, and not accept things at face value. I know Doug's wonderful at pushing things back, and I, and I know we, we go back and forth. But at the end of the day, now we have a big decision to make. We're going to decide what we're going to build. Because I, I stand here today, I know we're building a middle school. I don't know what, how big we're building it. I don't know how small we're building it. And I don't know what the price tag is. And that's probably the biggest concern the community has from this side of the fence is, where are we going to put, what, what kids are going to go in there, and how much is it going to cost? And with today's technology, and today, all the good things that are happening in the building sector, we need to challenge all the experts that we utilize, across the board, be it food facilities, be it whatever, to look at what they're providing for us, and keep an eye on it, and remember that it has to be of value for us and to the students. So I thank everyone's hard work. I look forward to working with people in the future. And everybody have a nice holiday. Enjoy your next Thursday off. You deserve it.
Thanks, Kevin. Any further public comment?
Wait, the board comment. I have just one quick. So the question's about the, the videos. The journey of a thousand miles begins with the first step. We, we've moved them to YouTube, and in essence, because we've moved them to YouTube, they load much faster for the users, and, and we can potentially index them. It is, it is a good question, and one which I think Matt might chat about. Because when we record the videos, they're a dead run, so it really comes down to running a stopwatch against this. It's a dead run, and recording when the motion is made, or when a motion is asked for. And then we can't index them. So it should not be, to, to your point, Steve, it should not be a massive expense. We loaded them to, to McGill. We loaded them to YouTube because it was faster for our citizens. And I know that in correspondence with people, I have often sent them a link to the meeting which starts at exactly the moment I wanted them to start watching, because you can index it by the second. So it's, it's a matter of having someone assigned to do it. It's not a board item. It's, we can have Matt, we can talk to Matt about it. We only need a motion if, if Matt says no.
Just want to make a comment about what was said about volunteering for committee chairpersons, I suppose. I think it was last year, or maybe the year before, it was my suggestion that we don't have committee members. We have chairpersons, but we don't appoint committee members because we can't have anybody come up to the meetings and attend the meetings. So, I don't want the public to think that if anybody's a chairperson, that means other crew members are coming to the meetings, because we do. So we do have chairpersons, and we, then we have, we don't have committee members anymore, but we do have board members coming to the committees and, and getting the information from them. On another topic, I just want to give another plug for the December 19th concert at Council Rock North by the Council Rock North Orchestra. There will also be performances by the Council Rock North Choir. So I hope everybody comes out. It's at 7:30.
Seventeenth.
The seventeenth?
Yeah, the nineteenth is Friday, although that would be a fun time.
It's the sixteenth, isn't it?
Sixteenth is north, thank you.
Sixteenth is north.
Seventeenth is Saturday.
Sixteenth. Been a long day. The sixteenth is at 7:30 PM. It's great. And please come out and support the young student musicians and the orchestra and choir. Thank you.
Motion adjourned.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.